Welcome to the Town of Bolton Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, March 4, 2025, 6:30 PM at Town Hall and Zoom. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and first, we're gonna pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first thing I'd like to do is, we have PTA, I'd like to move, get a motion to move.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we move 4A up to number three, uh, two.
Two A. Yep.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, next on the agenda is the PTA BCS Playground. We have, are we ready over there? Not quite.
Just verify that was Bob that seconded.
Yes, yes, yes. Was there a point to join us?
No, I just haven't said anybody else wants to talk about what's on if it's not so bad.
Hold on, it's a different agenda.
It's under.
What are relating to?
For them to be able to put up their presentations.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, so it's not really.
They have a very brief presentation.
I see. And they have a lot of members here.
Okay.
With kids.
Yep.
And they think.
No, I don't mind that, I just wonder why we aren't speaking.
The right guy.
So, you got the right.
Chairman?
Novice is in the room.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming, this is exciting for us on our side. So many faces and having come out impassioned about an issue and it means a lot to us on our side.
Particularly smiley faces.
Yes, thank you very much.
There's time yet, it's fine.
In progress.
You can mute the volume, please.
You guys can see me.
Okay, you can sit down and jump up your table if you want, so you have somewhere.
And can I share my screen?
Yep, yep.
Halloween, we got it, thank you.
All good.
Um, well, I'm Ashley Berkman, I am the Bolton Center School Playground Accessible Playground Project Chair, and I have two children who attend Bolton Center School, they're in kindergarten, and I have some of my posse behind me, so these are part of the PTA, and there are ladies behind me, so we just wanted to show you what we've been up through since the beginning of this school year, and to get your approval to move forward with our project. So, the inspiration for this project started with my love of playgrounds, as my children also love playgrounds as well. So, my son Carter uses a power wheelchair for accessibility, and, sorry, it's gonna take a second. The reason we love it is because it has accessible floor, its rubber is flooring throughout, there is no wood chips, which makes it very easy for him to use his power wheelchair for mobility, and his twin brother Calvin loves all playgrounds as any five-year-old would love. So, I have a short video to show you kind of our inspiration, why we would like to make our playground accessible, because currently there are wood chips, and a lot of the devices Carter cannot go on, so he can only really access the blacktop and flat surfaces. So, I'll show you a quick video, I hope it loads.
Should.
Oh, I don't know if the audio has been alert.
If you mute, maybe?
I might try.
You guys need to come off mute.
Oh, sorry.
I did.
I'm on mute now, we're good, okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear any of that.
Um, all I was saying was thanks for bearing with my happy tears, so you didn't miss much. So, this is our current proposal, these are actual schematics from our design, from our playground developers, so this is the playground developer who actually made the current playground that's there right now, John Hollerbach, so that was like sixteen years ago, seventeen years ago, and so he's very well aware of like the elevations and the playground itself, he did not do the preschool playground, but he did do the main playscape, so we did get another quote from another developer, just to make sure we were on par as far as cost, but we just really liked to design better, and he already knew the architecture really well, so we then decided to go with him. So, one of the main things that was really important to us was to be able to enter the playground from street level, so if you've been at Bolton Center School, it kind of is a sunken playground, and you enter on the street level, so you basically come in here, and currently you can kind of go up, turn around, and then come back down, unless you go down like a slide or some sort of an element, so we wanted to be able to have anyone who uses wheels or on foot could easily get on the playground and then weasel their way back down onto the main playscape, instead of having to go all the way around the whole entire playscape to get into the playground. So, we created that space with this current design, so it's kind of the main playscape area. This is just another element, so if you're having your back to the senior center, this here is a roller slide, which is really good for individuals with cochlear implants, so it doesn't interfere with their devices, things that I learned about accessible playgrounds that I didn't know about, but those are fun, so, and we have a lot of goodness and people who like to do elements such as that, we have some monkey bars in place, and again, like go up to different tiny elements, kind of similar to what we currently have. Again, this is kind of another example of that, so pretty much similar idea of like getting things down towards a level playground. So, this is kind of more of a bird's eye view, so if they keep standing in the road. So, out here in the back is this apex climber that currently, the net just needs to be replaced, so that's all we're doing with that, it's kind of fraying, and there's some metal pieces out, so we do need to change that. The maypole is staying the same because there's nothing wrong with it, and people love that. Again, the main playscape, and then here in the front, we're going to add in some elements for music, so we have like a maraca spinner, bongos, and a xylophone. The current swing set is perfectly fine the way that it is, except for the belt swings all need to be replaced, so we're gonna replace those, and we're gonna put in two new handicapped accessible swings because the latch mechanisms are broken in the other two, so we're gonna just kind of redo all that. Here in the middle is an accessible, what they call a world, basically married around, so basically, anyone can get on it on wheels or on foot and spin around together, and there is a moderator on it, so you can't go too quickly on there. And then in the back is a seesaw that people can sit on and kind of go back and forth together, and here in the front is a seesaw where individuals can wheel onto and stand on, so again, they have someone wanted the, we call it the Bob's Playground in Manchester, so they have something similar there. And then for our monkey bar and gymnast, we have some bars and then some parallel bars as well that we wanted to add in. Again, this is just another view of that same idea, kind of up close on more of the adaptable items, which are those there in the fourth round. I will say, our quote that I'm gonna show you here in a minute doesn't include new fencing around the preschool because it is broken down, so we figured we might as well just do that at the same time, so nothing's really getting changed in the preschool, other than the rubberized flooring throughout all of it, which you'll see is very costly, so this is kind of a bird's eye view. So, this was all of us back in the fall pitching our idea to our local officials, so we have Representative Weir, Representative Ackman, and we have Senator Ramon, and they're super excited about it, and definitely in full support of our ideas of what we want to do. We have a photographer in our presence, and this photo really wasn't so great with our being in the shadows, so our next photo's gonna be better whenever we get it fully done. So, yeah, again, everybody, the school officials, everybody's super excited. So, of course, funding and fundraising is like the biggest part, so we've set up a GoFundMe, which has done pretty well, we have a t-shirt sale going on, area business donations have been the most supportive so far, so, yeah, we've been soliciting area businesses and some grants, and we currently have a bond request in with the state of Connecticut to cover the majority of the cost of this project. So, I write our local officials probably weekly, they get tired of hearing from me about, you know, what's the next step, what do you need to hear from me, so they're kind of working and pushing on that, so as long as there's no guarantees, if you feel like a reasonable request to support such projects. And this was us on a very cold day, clearly. Senator Ramon generously donated $5,000 to our project, and so he wanted to come get a photo op with all of us, so that's us generously accepting his donation. If you're interested in the t-shirt, we would love to have everyone in a t-shirt at our grand opening and our ribbon cutting at some point, so this is on our Bolton Center PTA site for purchase through part of this month. And this is a breakdown of the cost of what everything is, we currently just showed you, so this is the playground equipment, the accessible equipment, and then the flooring, which is a huge, over half of the budget, and then the grand total. And we've currently raised about 10% of our total so far, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot so far.
And you just say what that total is, it's a little small.
Yeah, it's five, it's $565,434, so just over half a million dollars. Not too much.
So, that's like three things.
Do you have to take that, not by when?
Uh, well, as often as we can, so as soon as we have the funding is when we're going to pursue it. We're quoted, it takes about six weeks to order equipment, and then we just pick a date, and he can do it rain or shine, snow, anything within about a week. Yeah, so this developer had done the playground also that's in Tallinn, Adams Street Park, I believe is what it's called, so similar kind of ideas and stuff like that that we didn't know yet.
And what's the bond request amount that you have in?
For this stands about 10%, so just over half a million dollars.
That, you're asking for half a million from?
Yes, correct, because we had to say, because we wanted to, they wanted to know how much would it take to kind of cover the project, so I gave them the exact amount at that time that we had fundraised, yeah, stands what we just all needed.
Is there any other questions?
I have, I have.
Ashley?
Yes.
Is it? How, how different will the footprint be from what's there today in area?
The footprint's gonna stay the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so it also sounds like some of the equipment will stay, some of the equipment will go and be replaced with other equipment.
Correct, yeah, our original idea was to try to keep as much as possible, but after getting a quote from another equipment developer, they were saying, you know, you can keep replacing parts on this main playscape, and you'd have to replace so much to get it to be how we wanted it to enter onto the main playscape, that he's like, you might as well just start that all over, so it all is at the same birth rate, basically, so that had to be, our old idea of keeping that had to go, but we did try to keep as much as we could.
Is it, is what's gonna be, is what's gonna come out a significant amount of what's there?
Of the current equipment?
Yeah.
I would say so, yeah, I mean, like, the only things that are mainly that are staying is the maypole, that apex climber pole that you saw, and then also the swing set structure itself, and then all the new swings will go in.
So, with, with some repairs, could that existing equipment be repurposed in another location?
Um, that's a good question, John had said there's are some climbers that could maybe be removed over to the Hair Park or to somewhere else, so we could certainly do that as much as we could, I could ask him, I didn't ask on the main playscape what could be saved, but we certainly can try, there's no reason to toss it if we're going to.
Yeah, maybe, Rita, we've got ideas for playscapes in other locations where we have nothing now, for instance, we have an idea for playscape at Indian Notch Park, there's nothing there now, so if this is in, you know, with some repair and minimal expense to move it, if that could be a part of the plan, it might be something the Board of Selectmen would really appreciate.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think it would save on the cost of actually like disposing of stuff, which is also costly, so I mean, we're happy to give whatever, I mean, we don't really need it, anything costly.
We don't, and that was actually something that they had mentioned when we had the meeting to discuss the bonding, was that any overflow of the funds we could then use for playgrounds elsewhere in school, or not in school, in the town.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
Yes. Pam, you have a question? Comment?
A question, did you reach out to the federal delegation to Courtney's office to ask about ADA grants? Because it's a.
Um, I didn't ask Courtney's office about that, I didn't, so I can do that. I have been searching grants high and low and have written for many, and we've been denied for many, so it's a full-time job, the Senate, our Brett, when is this, when is this? Yeah, so she knows all the money details, she is messaging me back and forth every night about like, okay, this grant, there's that, it needs to. But definitely for ADA grants specifically, I've only applied for a couple, and they were more, they weren't local, so if I could find more local ones, I think I'd have more success.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, great, I would definitely do that.
And have you reached out to the senior center about the impact, particularly with the marvelous music portion?
Um, I haven't, no, but I can, it might be Good neighborly Policy. Yeah.
Is there any other comments? Yes, Pam.
You perceive a need to modify any of the existing curving or like, I guess the, yeah, part of the sidewalk in order to access the.
Like that?
Yeah.
I mean, I would love to, I don't know if that's, that wasn't in our budget, the curve is pretty high and it freaks me out, but Carter's PT says quit being a helicopter mom and let him drive, so I do, but it is pretty steep, and it really isn't like an easy way to access it unless you go at that handicap, there's like a, near the school.
Or do you jump dumpsters?
Yeah, exactly, and you kind of drag over, so the best we could do, I don't know if I can still up here, but on the playground here, we did put in extra fencing here to kind of delineate the entrance, but also there's some pretty big divots on this side where there's just any learning to make sure that, you know, people are safe as they're entering the playground, so.
Is there any reason you didn't change the entrance to like come in from the, the space between the senior center, like the paved area? I know it's blocked right now by, you know, concrete, but if those were moved, would it be safer to have like the entry on the other side?
Not necessarily, because he's still gonna have to drive all, you have to, if you have a device, you're gonna have to go all the way around even further, and part of the allure is that you can then access and like be on all of these elements, hit all these elements all the way down, and still kind of incorporate all the way in. You still could, I'm assuming we're gonna keep an opening on that area, and that's where we're probably gonna put the sign for donors to put up their shoes, so that's the allure of donating, is we'll put your name on the sign. Please sponsor that.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments, suggestions?
And just in clarification?
Yeah.
Is this on Town Land?
It's on Town Land.
Town of Bolton Land or on the school?
It's on Town of Bolton Land, so it needs approval from this board. Which is why they're coming to, first of all, I think they want to bring awareness to their project, but Ashley and I have been communicating, and that's the reason that they're here tonight, is to show you what their plan is, and they hope to gain the approval of this board to continue to move the project forward.
So, is there any reason we don't make a motion?
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a, it's.
Yeah, go on, the agenda.
It's the public comment section anyway, so.
Right, okay.
We have to wait till next meeting.
Okay, you can add it to your agenda, this is a regular meeting.
Oh, we can. Chairman?
Yes.
Then I would like to add to the agenda, I would like to open the agenda, please.
Yes.
Under four, under.
Two.
No. May I make it 3A?
Okay.
And I would like to. That we consider an act on the PTA BCS Playground proposal.
Now, is there a second?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Bob, seconds? All in favor? Aye, that's seven, nothing. Okay, so now moving down to 3A.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the.
Propose.
Proposal and process of the playground rehabilitation to make it, to have it become an ADA accessible facility with actor procurement of the appropriate funding.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven, zero.
Is that Amanda that seconded?
Yep. Yep.
Amanda did.
So that, oh, Mather?
They were both at the same time, so you got two seconds, so there you go.
I just like to say that in nineteen, the Dark Ages, I was on the playground committee, and we put a playground together, and we used telephone poles, so we did not know, it was state of the art. Remember that?
I guess.
Some people are young enough to think.
And we had, we got the pole donated from.
And it was donated, and we did all the fundraising as well, so bless you, I'm just saying.
Thank you very much for your efforts and your presentation.
Good luck. And keep in touch, please.
Yeah.
You did a great job, so yeah, we're gonna have to buy seven t-shirts.
Yeah.
I'd like to stay the rest of the meeting, I'm sorry.
What board of commissioners would you like to be on that?
Sign off.
Okay, so next, we're gonna have the, Novice is gonna give us a presentation.
What about regular public comment?
Oh, probably, I'm sorry, where did that go?
Is the rest of the public ignored?
No.
Okay, we'll go to, we'll skip four and go to public comment.
Go back up to two, go back up to two.
Public comment wasn't next on the agenda, sir.
We did pledge allegiance. Number three was, number three was Novice, number four was public comment.
PTA got moved down, public comment is behind Novice.
So, you already moved up, in moving up 4A to 2A, you moved up public comment? Like, that's just how it works.
Okay, so we moved.
No, it does, excuse me, I would like to correct that because we put a specific item on and not public comment, so it excluded the others, but this time I'd like to make a motion that we put public comment and move it up to.
To B.
Or to, to.
B.
B.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there anybody for public comment?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm here.
Oh, Jim Lurch is here, go ahead.
I'm a alumni of the old elementary school that's being demolished. It was a very important time in my life, a lot of important, good things happened there and else, and I've been bothered very much lately by comments that think it's a good thing that we're taking that school down, and they want to, prices for knocking it down or whatever else, and I, really bothers me, I think that the school, it should be something we mourn, not that something we praise, the school being taken down, so I just want you to recognize that, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and we'll do our best on that.
I'm John Lender from the 23 Colne, well, I've been here the last two meetings, and I saw that you have on the agenda, I just wanted to let you know that we're still interested, I noticed that there's work that's been begun, anyway, on the trees down at the top of Colonial Road, and we're all scared, interested in what happens, and that's all I'm here to say.
Very good, thank you, John.
Sure.
Is there any other public comment? Yes.
I'm sorry, could I just get his name, John?
Lender.
Lender, L-E-N-D-E-R.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, name and address.
People, I'm on Vernon Road, 15 Vernon Road. So, I came out, kind of as a segue to the last speaker, that as a concerned citizen and concerned parents, that we want to make our roads safer, so we are hoping to be on the agenda for the, if we're giving, this is our vision, we want to have roads that our kids can walk on and bike on, so we are hoping to get some traffic calming measures, that's our proposal to the town, happy to put some time and effort and resources into it. Officially, I'd like to say people in town would enjoy walking, biking down public roads, for example, kids could walk to school, people can enjoy the town, the scenery. I know kids who live two blocks away from BCS, are caught road, they're gonna take a bus to school, that'd be great if kids could, you know, put each other on the road, walk to the school, that, have to take a bus. Most of the roads in town are not conducive to walking and biking because of speeding cars, merit to non, there's a breakdown lanes. Traffic calming measures could allow pedestrians and bicycles to use the road safely, roads that are pedestrian bicycle friendly, increase property values, promote healthy habits, encourage social interaction, reduce pollution. And we're, I did successfully with a grant from the CTDOT as a education program, and I do have that, that up at the next meeting, and we're hoping that both of you can get on board with a similar project.
Okay.
We have a group of people here that came out to support that effort.
Is there any other, anybody wants to speak on something other than what she just said? I mean, this other comment, yes?
Um, I'm currently sponsored from 96 Leam Street Road. I just wanted to see if something could be done about the tennis court lights. They're kind of a hazard, we're driving up Loomis, get blinded, can't see anything really, anyone walking would, would see them. Also, our entire yard is just lit up the entire time, everyone uses them, whether it's like one in the morning, which I think is a little ridiculous to do playing tennis at one in the morning. So, I was just hoping that maybe something could be done to like block some of the light pollution that's coming out into the neighborhood, maybe get like a timer or something, so that they can't turn on in the middle of the night, wake us up with their music and talking and stuff, we have to be a very kind state.
Very good, I appreciate that comment. Is there anybody else? So, we want to try to get you on the next agenda for March, we'll.
And I'm sorry, what type of lights are those?
Tennis court, the lights of the tennis court.
Tennis court, okay, thank you.
We've been in communication about the April meeting.
Okay, all right, very good, so we look forward to seeing you at the April meeting, I guess, right? How many attendants are here with you? Oh, quite a few, very good, thank you all for coming. Okay. Very good. Okay.
I'm on the list to speak, and I just, I think I'm gonna regret it if I don't. So, I just wanted to let you know, my name's Sherri Duboe, I live on 111 Vernon Road, and a lot of people know where I live when I say the orange and white pumpkins during Halloween on the stone wall, but anyways, I live right where Torey comes into Vernon, right at that point, and I can't tell you how many times during the day when I'm outside I hear horns, and I said, it's not a matter. And I said, it's not a matter of the horn beeping and the accident just being missed, it's when there's no horn. And there's an accident, and there's been a few there. And something I know can be done, and I was shocked the other day that I just noticed coming down Quarry heading toward little Vernon. Ox shoe coming into Vernon, that there's no sign on Quarry that even tells you. That there's a road that's coming out there. So people that aren't, I think we have to realize that not everyone driving our roads are familiar with our roads. And people are coming down Quarry, and it's, it's like a racetrack right there, just straightaway, uh, I, so. I had the opportunity today to talk to Brian, our resident trooper. Um, how did he say, contenta, content for the day? Okay, so. He was, it was like, I'm in my house and I see this cruiser in front of my house pulling over a car, and I said, oh my God. Don't see that very often, so then I kept about my business and I saw it again within, within ten minutes. And I saw it again within ten minutes. So I said, I asked him if he could just pull in my driveway for a minute so I could chat. And I said, it's like Jiffy Pop, you know, you, if you, wherever you're sitting, this is, this is our life, it's like speed zone. And he says, I'm only pulling over people who are going twice as fast as the speed limit. So that means they're going over fifty miles an hour on Quarry Road past my house. When I work on that stone wall and try to do my nice flowering, I put cones. I put a wheelbarrow out so they hit the wheelbarrow before me, I wear reflective vests, I wear blinking lights. I look like a Christmas tree in this room, so. All we're asking for, why we're here, is because we just, you know, Vernon Ri- I know there's other people with other roads. But Vernon Road is kinda crazy, and where Quarry comes down, it is like a straightaway. And in the more, in, in the summer, you have the motorcycles that are using it as. And I know we just had that roller accident, um, a little ways away Vernon, from Vernon Road. So, all I'm asking, what we're asking for, is to give it another. Look at that area again and try to figure out what we can do to slow people down. Not a blinking speed light that says how fast they're going. Maybe, maybe a blinking light on the yield where people are coming up from Vernon. Have it blinking, because they're looking like this at Quarry, they don't even see sometimes that yield sign. So I think that that sign has to be blinking orange, another sign has to be put on Quarry just to let people know there's a road coming in. And then beyond that, I don't know, stop signs, not sure. Cause I know that our resident troopers are very, very limited with their time. He said they have a grant, given four hours a month for catching speeders. Four hours a month. So, that's not a lot of time, and that's for the entire town of Bolton, we happen to be on Quarry Road today.
Yep.
So we need something more permanent, we can't rely on the police being there pulling people over, thanks for your time.
Thank you for speaking, is there any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, just reiterating what Sherri said, my name's Carol Henry and I live at one thirty-five Vernon Road. I'm the last house before, uh, Bolton turns to Vernon. And if you, and I bought it, we bought nineteen ninety-nine Dr. Graham's house, for those of you the old timers here. And he warned me a lot about how dangerous, uh, the corner was and to always come out my driveway and scoot in the opposite lane. And make sure you could see the cars coming like hell down the, around the bend so that you don't get creamed. And I have intervened in accidents where, you know, people have gotten hurt, I've run out there trying to keep somebody warm while the ambulance has come. They hit the pole, you know, across to my house telephone pole, and then, uh, they hit our fence multiple times, our stone wall multiple times. And I've intervened when pets have been hit by a car, you know, pet just accidentally gets out of the house and. And there's also feral cats across the street that have gotten killed and we buried them and stuff like that too. But it's been a major, major issue, and I empathize with the, I can't paint that fence without taking my life into my hands. I mean, I put phones out there, wheelbarrows, I put everything out you can imagine. Um, so that I can try to, you know, like run real quick if something's coming, but it's a major. And I, we moved in there, you know, nineteen ninety-nine, I remember there was some effort trying to figure out what could be done about that corner. At one point, there were mirrors on a couple of the house, the poles by people's houses so that maybe folks could see you coming around the corner. But they have since long gone. And I think at one point there was a desire for speed bumps and things like that, I know the technology of those things have changed for the better. Where they're not damaging cars and, uh, but anyway, if you could, you know, I just want to implore you to please try to look at that area again, we'd really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, go ahead.
Thank you, Marie Ixti, I live, uh, just downhill from Susan at one thirty-one Vernon Road. Um, and I wanna say that, you know, I, uh, totally concur with all the statements about wishing to slow traffic down. People are extremely aggressive driving, but in addition, we live in such a beautiful part of the world here with. State forest on one side, Bolton notch, and it kind of breaks my heart that, um, it's frightening. To leave our house and by foot or on bicycle, walk a third of a mile down to the entrance into the state park. Or walk the other way to get to Bolton notch, um, it really feels, uh, reckless to, to get out on the road. Even just for a short ways, because people are driving such unsafe speeds and, uh, so.
Thank you.
Support these statements.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could I, I'm sorry, can I get her name again? She said it really fast.
I'm sorry, Inga Marie Ixti. E I G S T I.
And I'm Lisa Holly, I live at one twenty-nine Vernon Road on the same property as Inga and next to Carol and all these other folks. Um, I would concur with everything that's been said as well, um, I'm an avid runner and, um, walk on the road and it is extremely dangerous. I don't know how many times I've had to jump off the side of the road to, you know, and I wear bright colored, um, clothing and. Um, don't wear any of your, um, music or anything, I'm, I'm very aware of my surroundings, I've been running for many, many years, so I know how to do that. But it's very, very, um, scary, as everybody mentioned, to be able to, to access, um, a, a. A run, a walk, the parks, bicycling, and even, um, leaving our driveway, just as Carol has said, we are the next driveway over. And we have come this close many a times getting into accidents ourselves, just leaving the driveway, even entering the oncoming traffic lane. To be able to leave safely. Um, in addition, we've helped numerous people with accidents as well, coming up onto the stone wall in front of our house, so I think it's. It, an average, everybody who's driving around us is driving fifty to sixty miles an hour, even around that herd by Carol, so.
Thank you, is there any other comments, public, yes, okay.
Ellie King, uh, I live at one four nine Brandy Street, um, and I just want to echo what everyone, what all these women have said. Um, it feels very dangerous, I walk the dogs, I walk with the baby. Um, I don't live on Vernon Road, I know how dangerous that road is, but even our little street, Brandy Street, people speed, it's scary. Um, I'd love to be able to walk with the baby and the dog and not feel like I'm gonna get run over.
Thank you, uh, go ahead.
Emily Morris, don't live on Vernon Road, thirty-one hundred yards, so across the lane. Um, born and raised in Bolton, it was a dream living here. Um, my biggest complaint is just not being connected to, you know, the bike trail, that was the best thing to come to Bolton. Um, but man, it would be awesome to get rid of that divide, you know, that side of town and this side of town and be able to. Like, run, what have you, um. Anyway, no, within, within, I know we can't have sidewalks anywhere, but. Um, if we could just start that process and win, you know, over the next fifty years, like, how many can we value? Yeah, if I'm one of yours, so I'd love to be able to bike with him, thankfully.
We have thirteen year olds here, we can't leave our property because of where we are, we literally cannot walk off the field. We've got just these four accidents, um, right in front of us. They spit out, give the telephone pole, they knocked, that's, you know, these four, the five years that we've lived there. I almost hit somebody on a bike coming down the road towards forty-four. The only guy I've been not hitting, especially, is when I heard him screaming so loudly that please stop. The only reason I didn't actually hit this person on their bike, but, but back in the area, he saw this and I was shook for the entire day that I almost.
Uh, is there any other comments? Uh, oh, yeah.
Hi, um, I'm Sarah Torcello, different streets, one fifty, last three. I thought I'd throw a little change in here, um, same complaint, I understand that West Street is a state road. Um, I live in between Clark and School Street, and in the ten years I've lived there, we've had. At least twenty accidents, we've had three fatalities, I've had the road blocked off by state troopers where I couldn't get home. And so, like, hey, I live right there, they're like, okay, look, I had one accident that. If it were not for that hideous tree that, which is now taken down, just kinda sad at the same time, but. If it, i- if that tree wasn't there, the truck would have ended up in my kitchen. Um, so that stretch in between, let's say, Parkside Pizza and Brian. I mean, look, it, it's, it's a scary stretch because we have school buses coming out of Loomis, school buses going out to school. Streets, um, it's a racetrack, it is an absolute racetrack, people tearing out of the, the store. Um, there's a couple people that I can clock, um, I know Chuck, the car, the license plate, and it's. Five thirty at, in the morning, five thirty in the evening, I know the sound, it is just. It's obnoxious, and for someone that has PTSD due to whatever reason, it's, it's offensive, um. Just, that was, notwithstanding, it's just, it's dangerous. So, is there something that we can propose for that stretch? I mean, I noticed, I drive for a living, I'm in my car eight hours a day, I clock a minimum of a hundred and fifty miles a day. So I'm all over the state of Connecticut, so I see all kinds of different traffic patterns and. I'm very conscious of the speed limit and what's around me, but not everybody does what I do or what we do. Riding a bicycle, um, children that are gonna be in your front yard, um, they just aren't conscious of it. Um, is there something that we can do to help these people understand, hey, listen, this isn't just our town that you're driving through. This is our neighborhood, this is our family. That's all.
Thank you, very good. Uh, okay, so everybody's had their chance to speak, um, we're gonna move on to. Uh, novice presentation.
Excuse me, I, I have, I have a comment that I'd like to make about a topic that's not on the agenda, do, do you want me to do that now during public comment? Or will there be a, a time later?
Go ahead, yeah, no, there won't be time later.
Okay.
I'm moving this along.
Okay, so, um, the, the subject matter is, um. The change in policy about what gets announced on the Bolton e-Bolton. And this just came to my attention today that there was a change and, um, no longer are, um. Functions other than town-sponsored functions go, are going to be able to be publicized on the e-Bolton. And I just, um, saw that there was a Facebook paste, uh, paste, a host. Uh, by a resident and who said, um, who, who posted the email that was received from somebody in town hall. And, um. The email reads, uh, to address your first question, we implemented these changes starting last month. The, the decision was made after careful consideration by the administration, as we found that the bulletin was becoming quite large. And important information from town offices was sometimes being overlooked due to the volume of content. The goal is to ensure that key updates from the town are more clearly communicated. Regarding the type of events that will be posted moving forward, we're focusing on town events and information such as those from schools, the senior center, the library, firehouse, recreation department. We've had several requests particularly from churches to include their events, but the administration decided it would be best to prioritize official town events in the bulletin. Of course, special, excuse me, special events like holidays in December will still be included. So this was the first time that I became aware of this, and I, and I disagree with the change in policy because we don't have a local paper anymore. And this, I, this is to me, the local paper, or the e-Bolton. It's really easy, you just get it in your email, you don't have to read it if you don't want to, um, but it comes to, it comes to. Us, whoever signs up for it, I am not, I'm not a social media user, so I, I will now be. I, I will be at a loss for knowing all of these activities that are going on, other than the town, the town, um, sponsored activities. So I disagree with the, with the decision to, to make that change, and also. I disagree with the, with the use of the word, the administration made this decision, because when I read this, I thought, oh, just, did the board of selectmen decide this? And no, this was never, this was never brought before the board of selectmen, so I don't know who the administration is. Um, and I don't think that that word should have been used. And, um, I also just wonder whose opinion it is that it's becoming too long. And how do we know that town information is being overlooked? So it's, it's just, um, I, I don't like, I don't like the way the response was given to the residents. And I think that we should go back to the other policy, and I'd also like to know who, who made this decision. And also who, uh, who drafted this, this email and who.
Two different tabs, like tabs.
So this isn't a discussion, this is a public comment that she's making, and once she's done with her comment, we're gonna move on. And if somebody decides we wanna put it on the agenda, we can add it, but it'll be added. Otherwise, we could be here all night having discussions on everything and that's not, novice came here to give us a presentation and, and they're. They're patiently waiting. Yes.
Um, Amanda Gordon, board member, but speaking on the subject that, uh, Gwen just raised. Since Gwen is not on social media, I found it and brought it to her attention, um, I did let the person who posted it know that I would bring it. That we would bring it up here as an item of discussion, I do think it should be added to either this agenda or future agenda for further discussion.
It's, I, I agree with that, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I just wanna get novice.
Yep.
Up to that here.
Yeah, Mr. Lender here, we have people here from Colonial, we bring forward, moved up.
I wanna get novice going, no.
You're good.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You, you're welcome to call me or stop it.
Yeah, that's good, too, all right, thank you.
Uh, okay, so now we're gonna move on to number three. So that the novice boys can give us their presentation on our. Um, computer security programs.
Jim, do you mind if I, you're remote in and take.
Please do, do I need to mute?
Uh, no, you'll be able to.
Uh, thank you, everybody, uh, my name is Eric Boon, I'm the CEO of Notice Insight, we are your. Managed, uh, support provider, so we are your essential IT for the town. Uh, we also support, um, the Board of Ed, uh, in Bolton, uh, as well as many. Uh, towns, school districts, libraries and nonprofits throughout the state. Um, we were asked to, uh, come tonight to give you guys a brief presentation, I'm gonna move through it in a sense of, uh, time. But at any point in time, if you feel like you want to slow down, pause on a point, gladly will. Uh, this is, uh, Kevin Icard, he is your site lead and he's one of the leaders at, at Novus. Um, we focus on five main areas, uh, the area that you guys primarily utilize is managed services. Which is the day-to-day IT, uh, support that you get within the town. Uh, we also provide special projects so that if there is something that you need that is beyond day-to-day. Um, refreshing all of your computers, uh, modifying your network, adding wifi, let's say. I want to suggest any with the playground on the wifi, we could, we do that, we do that kind of different towns, those are special projects. We consult, um, on cybersecurity issues, uh, whether that's partnering the town, whether that's using multi-factor authentication. Uh, training, what have you, uh, for those of you who have taken the know before training, uh, that's part of our cybersecurity program. Um, application development, uh, if there's custom needs for data management, uh, automation, visualization, we do that as well. And we also provide security services, uh, which is above and beyond cybersecurity, it's the monitoring of your systems. Um, so that if a hacker does make an attempt, there's twenty-four seven coverage to mitigate that situation to the extent. That is possible, then, the services that you have.
Uh, and by the way, hi, Kevin Icard, manager of professional services, I'm, uh, directly liaison for the town between Novus and the town. So I have more day-to-day operations with our onsite technician, Karen Arson, as well. I just wanna give a brief overview of your current services summary, uh, what you're being provided to in your managed support contract. So you have managed services, which includes an annual VCIO meeting, that's a yearly presentation to discuss. A long-term strategic objectives as well as, uh. a long-term strategic objectives as well as uh reports as far as ticketing, reports, toolsets. And any sort of uh engagements with the town.
What does a DCIO mean?
Uh, virtual Chief Information Officer, so it's a more of an executive process for an executive presentation. You have access to remote support either through email or phone, uh, Monday through Friday, uh, eight thirty AM to five PM. You have onsite scheduled support where a technician is physically within the town working physically on tickets, uh, scheduled four hours every week. You have unscheduled support, uh, for either that technician to make uh ad hoc stops if necessary outside of those scheduled hours. Or if I need to be involved with with escalation support, um, that would include some of my time as well. You have access to emergency escalation support, so in the event that there's an outage of the town or uh some significant process, including after hours, um, that would, there's time associated with that. There's a quality assurance process where uh every every few years, there's a novice team that is not familiar with the town of Bolton. That is at the analyst level or above that comes in with a fresh set of eyes. And reviews the environment to just check the work that myself and the other team associated with town accomplishes. And we have systems monitoring services, so um all all your endpoints, your Windows endpoints and servers associated with the the town of Bolton has an agent on them. And we provide monitoring of those devices for different levels of alerting or remediation tasks for those. Uh, there's sixty-three endpoints associated with the town that are home that. Uh, that is Windows endpoints as well, servers and the environment.
The town or town and board of any?
Uh, town. Uh, you have two hosted servers, uh, which is a domain controller and a file printer. You have backup services associated with those uh servers. And you have security services uh on all of your Windows endpoints. Uh, which is through our security operations center. And we have advanced message filtering, which is an added layer of protection on all um outlook inboxes within the town. Similarly, with the know before awareness training that is on all devices' mailboxes within the town. I just wanna give a quick history and review, um, just because you guys don't get a chance to see me face to face and and kind of see what Novus does. Uh, but uh, Novus has been involved with the town of Bolton since twenty twenty-three. Uh, and we kind of came into the town of Bolton, uh, with some specific projects associated with the town. At that time when we took over, uh, there were identified cybersecurity risks and vulnerabilities spread throughout both the endpoints, server, and wireless network infrastructure. Uh, endpoints were unmanaged, so there wasn't any centralized patching, reporting, visibility in any of your endpoints associated with the town. There was aging endpoint and network hardware, so there wasn't necessarily any sort of replacement lifecycle in place or the dataset provided to make those informed decisions. And the town was jointly combined with the domain on the school end, so it looked like one larger network at that time. And the IT support was more reactive, we found, where everything was kind of a fire. There wasn't really any sort of advanced proactive measures being taken. It was bandages were put in place to make it work at that moment in time. Uh, fast forward to today, some of the the critical components completed between twenty twenty-three and today, either through special projects or through managed support over time. Some of the enhancements that the town has received and has matured from that point include cybersecurity awareness training, which is the know before uh uh program that you are involved with. You have EDR, which is endpoint detection and response on all Windows endpoints uh through the Novus Security Operations. You have centralized patching on all Windows endpoints and servers uh automated on a weekly basis. You have secure Windows baselines associated with all machines, so there's a baseline level of security uh configuration applied to all managed devices. You have multi-factor authentication um on all of your um your email clients as well as any administrative portals accessible to the internet. And you have premium message filtering on top of your inboxes as well. There was a network segmentation project done to isolate the town from the schools, so you are two separate networks, as it should be. Then you town migrate to the whole NCT dot gov domain separating out once again from whole NCT dot word, which is the board of education. The server infrastructure was consolidated down from about twelve servers at the at the time of uh, we us taking over down to the two remaining. So uh, services were consolidated and made more efficient depending on what was involved in the environment at that time. There was a natural uh network physical move and restructuring associated with the trailer. Trailers being put in and the demolition associated with the upcoming half of the building, the uh the network rack associated with both the senior center and the finance office at that time is actually in the uh part of the building that's going to be destroyed, so there was a restructuring project associated with moving that into the building that is not being destroyed.
I just wanna, I just wanna point out the the server traditional from twelve to two. That's, you know, like, oh, that's great, but the the real savings for you guys is that the cost to maintain and secure each server, it may hit you every year, but it's every so many years, you get this massive expense. So you were able to cut that down significantly, that saving over, you know, the next couple of years, it's gonna save you tens of thousands of dollars. So that was a very strategic move that did save in your your overall operating budget. Uh, anyhow, you accrue for it.
And the twelve were on-prem and that one is in the cloud and one is on-prem?
Uh, there is two, two in the cloud today. Uh, there is, there is one remaining server on-prem that was not on the host associated that were in discussions um to to move to our, yeah. And you have quantitative VCIO support, which is, you know, we I meet with the administration frequently as far as 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 sort of anything pops up, but we have an official yearly greeting to review all processes and every uh all operation associated with that. Here's a quick overview, um, as far as priorities and projects uh discussed with the town um as well. So there's one remaining server on-prem, which is the QDS server. Uh, that is not associated with the aging, yes, uh, aging server host that was on-premise. We consolidated all the servers on that aging host to consolidate that down to two and remove that host from the equation. So that way you would not have a large capital expenditure to replace that host as it was end of life. So the only remaining server, which was on its own physical box, was that QDS server, which is uh, end of service life for that that needs to be replaced. There are two firewall replacements associated with Bethlehem Memorial Library and Harriet Park. The hardware associated with those is end of service life uh this upcoming April, uh, which is in which is in this fiscal year. Uh, there are system replacements that were identified as there is a major Windows upgrade occurring between Windows ten and eleven. So unlike previous iterations of Windows, uh the upgrade to Windows eleven has very specific requirements as far as hardware, security implementations and process. With our toolset, we were able to run a script to directly associate the requirements with Windows eleven across all endpoints within the town on board to identify exactly which machines would or would not be compatible with the Windows eleven upgrade in October, which is the end of life for Windows ten. In the event you have personal machines at home, uh, October is the end of life for Windows ten, uh, per reference. So the systems replacements that we're targeting for that is directly in association with that Windows ten uh end of service life. There is some aging hardware at the town hall here as far as switching the UTS replacements. That is end of service life within this fiscal year. And the indication for those is the hardware still functions, but once a hardware vendor has indicated the end of service life for that hardware. It's no longer receiving hardware or security updates and you can't call in for support. So the warranty is up on those devices in the event you uh the hardware dies the day after that service life is is over, you can't call in for our management device. Similarly, the uh NRC, Natro Municipal Center, the senior center. The wireless at the senior center is end of service life within the the same fiscal year. This was a slide that we went over with the administration as far as some budget planning associated with that. Um, the priority projects is uh included the town hall network project, which was replacing two switches. The uh uninterrupted power supply and the labor associated with that uh cut over. The firewall replacements for Harriet Park and Bethlehem Memorial Library. The systems replacements uh are to be determined uh as as Cam, our onsite technician, as well as myself, are working with the administration to see if we can point when machines were identified as not compatible with Windows eleven, but we're trying to see if we can consolidate any any um machines that may not need to be replaced and can be removed from the equation. Uh, and there there's potential labor associated with that depending on when the machines are ordered and how how we can spread that out over time. So with the uh end of life being October, depending on how soon we can order machines and if we can spread that out over our managed support time, we we can move more of that into our managed support contract. And with the QDS server, uh, QDS is a specific application utilized by the town. That migration P is directly associated with QDS, the vendor, uh, migrating their their software.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with us. That's their fee.
And then the additional projects include the wireless replacements like senior center and that was uh hardware associated with that. And the ongoing estimated monthly cost for the QDS server hosting. The licensing provided bottom is something that the town is already paying for, but we are putting it there for budgeting purposes.
Um, so we have leaded a year-long review of expenses uh as relates to managed support. We treat managed support as an insurance policy. Um, we don't look to make money off of managed support. We look to break even. So when we price it, we price it for break even plus a little bit extra so that if there's no overage, we take care of it. Or, you know, if this year it's Bolton needs it, next year it could be, you know, another town that needs it, and so we make sure that everybody's covered. Um, unlike insurance companies, we don't seek to make high margins off of our managed support. We make our margins off of other things like our volume pricing, our projects, our security services. Um, so we look at managed support as what does it cost us to provide this? And if we, so we split four hours a week, eight hours a month, we're on schedule. If you have an issue, we're not gonna say, oh, your time's up, right, pay more. We're not gonna say we'll come back next month. We're gonna solve it. And if one month we're a little bit lighter, you know, next month we're a little bit heavier, we take care of it. So that's how we look at our relationship view. It's a long, it IT is like infrastructure. You have to take care of your buildings. You have to take care of your IT. It's a long-term partnership and that's how we want to engage with our clients. Um, during the I the pandemic period, we saw labor rates skyrocket. And but we also knew that our clients, because it's municipalities, schools, and nonprofits, could not keep up. And so we, well, naively thought, like, how long is this gonna last? Um, and it kept on, you know, creeping along, creeping along, creeping along. We got to a point now where we needed to true up. So during, from pre-pandemic to pandemic, um, our rates for managed support went up by about twenty-two percent on average across the board over over that entire period, right, little bit here and there. IT labor rates went up between thirty-nine and sixty-eight percent. So we put those two together, you get that number. Um, and the reason for that is two-fold. One is that an IT tech that we had pre-pandemic two thousand nineteen would not get hired today by us because they don't have the skill sets. That's how much things have changed over the past five years because, you know, Zoom was novel, right? The cloud and SharePoint and all things that we contacted for now was novel and those techs were paid a premium. And so now all the baseline techs had to level up. And so there is salary competition based on that. And then the techs that do not do the stuff and are very savvy with the cloud environment, they got poached. And so the salary for them went through the roof. Um, and they have not, they've at least flattened out, but they have not gone down. Um, so we are working with our clients to figure out how to bridge this gap. We went and did analysis to figure out what would it take to kind of true everything out based on what everybody has. We realized that for some clients, it was a pretty steep jump. And for other clients, it wasn't actually that bad depending when they came into the the process and and what services they had. So we built a model to stretch it out for three years. So what we are talking to all of our clients about is if we can, right now, we have literally month to month. Like, if you guys, we fully believe that, you know, if you're not happy with us, you're right with us. Like, we should be earning, you know, our keep every month. In this situation, if we can uh come to a three-year arrangement, we will spread out that increase over three years. And we do that, we, for purposes of demonstration, we did on one-third, one-third, one-third. But the last thing we want is one of our clients to forego a necessary project they need in order to help make us whole. So at the end of the three years, we need to be, you know, with those numbers show, but how we get there is totally up for, you know, reasonable discussion. You guys have some projects coming up. And how that that fits in, we wanna work with you on to make sure that you guys get what you need, we get what we get, because it's a long-term partnership. Um, so uh, with that, and we also have one thing that we offered in we are still relatively new here within the town, is we are by nature a very frugal bunch. Um, we all grew up east of the river. We all kind of look, you know, at the world through that lens. And um, if we can offer support in, you know, tech-adjacent budget line items, cell phones, landlines, copiers, we're helping with payroll, like electricity consumption, I assume, you're solar, so you got that nailed down, right? That kind of stuff. We will gladly offer our support and share our successes and be able to provide trusted partners that we've gone with for your consideration. Um, that includes also cyber insurance. We went on our own cyber insurance journey because we were not happy with our broker and we found somebody that we're super impressed with. And a lot of towns, uh, we've recommended and I will leave that town or that the provider nameless. But there is a a insurance broker that every, well, many towns utilize and we found significant savings from that broker. So anything we can do to help out, we will gladly throw out in all persons, that's part of the VCIO program. So that being said, um, you're looking at labor. This is a labor issue, right? So looking at labor, um, the current monthly bill is three hundred, uh, thirteen, excuse me, three thousand three hundred dollars a month. Um, there's a variance of sixteen hundred dollars a month, so it's about fifty percent jump. And um, if we span it out with five hundred and fifty dollar increments over the next three years, it looks like this. Knowing we're also looking forward, I'm trying to crystallize what the next three years look like in a very turbulent time, right, with change administration. Things are going wildly in every direction. Doesn't matter what side of the political you're on, right? The the inflationary pressures are there. So I did a ton of research and looked at what I thought was a reasonable number. And this number is a bounding number because you guys have to budget. If it goes above that, that's my problem. If it goes below that, I will administratively across all of our clients lower that number. Um, because again, we're not looking to make excess profit. We are looking to manage our costs as it relates to uh managed support. Similar goes to our toolset hosting. So the other services you have were lock-in pricing and then we would deal with any type of variances that come out of that if Microsoft changes the pricing or whoever, you know, beam or backup services. Um this is four hours per week on site. So right now there is, you know, there is a fact that there's a premium associated with they're not there the whole day because I gotta pay for travel. I gotta pay for rescheduling. But the reality is that we um at Bolton Schools, we're there four and a half days a week. And so right now it pairs up that we have the same tech is in Bolton and just go down the road. So accordingly, they're excited.
Oliver was nice enough to put his laundry away, huh?
Uh if if both the town and the school district continue, you know, continues to coordinate together, um we priced it in as eight hours every other week. So it's a full day so that that transition premium is gone. But we will gladly support the half day every week so that it can still, you know, be the the temp- the tempo that you guys want. Um and that does change the price um from um sixteen hundred dollars to an eight hundred dollar increase. Um but that's as long as the two agencies, you know, still work together counter. And we've done the same thing for the the Board of Ed. I'll pause there.
Is that the end?
Yes.
You don't have a little slide that says, oh, yeah. Okay. Is there any uh comments, Amanda?
Yeah. Um so do we have a disaster recovery plan that we test every year for the town?
We currently do not.
We do not?
We have poles for edge. Uh that's that's a separate project to build out and then we tabletop it.
What does that mean? Sorry?
Um go through and and test it with the town. So the town knows um what to do.
Okay. The other thing I've run up against is some employees saying that they're unable to access the server when they're off-site. Should that be an issue?
That should not be an issue. There is a VPN associated with.
That was my question. I wrote VPN question mark. Um.
Well, the question is, do they, what is off-site, right? Is it off-site?
Home.
Okay, not like foreign country, okay?
No, no.
I should clarify, from a from a managed uh town-owned device, as long as it's not their personal device at home, they'd be able to access.
Okay, so they cannot use a VPN, not a personal device?
Correct. That's for your own, the town's own safety.
Yep.
Um and then do you, so when we talk about, and maybe this is related to disaster recovery, right? We're talking about backup security. For the town-owned devices, uh does the backup include their local drives, MyDocs, desktop, et cetera? Is that part of the backup, daily backup or no?
Uh so the the files associated with the Windows endpoints are either stored in two locations. Short answer, yes. In in the sense of uh there's the local file share that on the hosted server that all endpoints have access to, which is the the town shared drive, which are are backed up.
Right.
Uh and then there is OneDrive, unbacked backup. So desktop documents, pictures are automatically backed up to the cloud.
Okay.
Uh short answer, yes.
All right.
So the one backup security thing that you guys do not have that week has become more relevant um is that, so right now you have N E D R. So that's the endpoint, the computer itself. Somebody hacks the computer.
Mm-hmm.
What you don't have is is an option. Um and it's not necessarily needed right now, but it's a preferred to have. And then, you know, going forward, it may become something that we're going to say, you really need to have this or your insurance say you really need to have this. It's called I T D R. Used to be known as M D R or X D R, depending what brand you had, but essentially it's the same security service, but it's for your uh Microsoft three sixty-five cloud environment. So right now, if somebody, if you give up your M F A token, so if if somebody tricks you through social engineering, that's like you've been known before. No, no, for trainings. If somebody tricks you to give up that code and they get into three sixty-five, there's nothing this is going to do to help you, right? It's in the cloud.
Right.
And and game over at that point. Um so if we, if there is I T D R services, then it treats it the same way. It that we have software that senses it and automatically isolates it and locks it down to just that one person or ideally locks them out completely. Um so that's um something that just want to be fully transparent um that from a protection point of view, you have just about everything, but you don't have everything.
Any other questions?
No.
Well, no, there's a just, that's just an overload. That's all. Thank you. No, but it's a I feel a little more comfortable knowing that from where we were to where we are, it's it's a significant step up. Um I do like the concept of looking more forward than one month at a time, looking long-term. And I appreciate you putting together a proposal that utilizes both the the school and town as a combined unit. That just makes all kinds of sense. It's it's that that's a part where this administration has always been working towards is combined efforts. That makes sense. Um I guess. I know we can't prognosticate the future, particularly in that industry because it changes every day, let alone. But, okay, wh- where do you, where do you, where do you see us in two years from now as far as what kind of challenges are we going to be facing? What you have now, I think, deals with where we are as far as our I T and what we have and what we do, but as times changes.
I think overall, like you guys have done a ton in the past couple of years and and so thank you for letting us do that because that's what you needed and we're able to do it. And now you're in a much more stable spot. There's always improvements you can do. There's always going to be initiatives where we want, hey, we want this, we want that. There's life cycle management. And and if you stay on top of the life cycle management, you guys are in a pretty happy spot. There's little things here and there that we can do. The name of the game is going to be cyber. It is cat and mouse and the application for cyber insurance four years ago was literally a page, page and a half. It is now twelve pages and requires him, not even Cam, requires him to answer it. And he has to go back to our cyber folks. They're super in-depth and the thing that was voluntary last year can come mandatory this year, give you the coverage. So that's the one thing that from an expense point of view and, you know, you guys are almost, I'd say, like best in class, fully covered within reason. Um but it could be, you know, two years from now, there's some new whatever. Then software comes out with some new countermeasure and that's the risk.
Thank you, Amanda.
Um for your in-office hours for both the town and the school, do you guys track the number of projects or things you're helping with during those hours?
Yes.
Is that data that can be provided?
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we we track it via time sheets, notes, so it's informal.
Just to know like how many projects are getting done in those four hours, you know?
Yeah.
How is it being used? Is it not being used?
It's it's not so much projects per se. I mean, it's like little stuff here and there. So like
Right.
Um so like with the computers, if we try to be reasonable about computer refreshes, replaces, and there's a balance between life cycle, so life cycle management and while Cam is here, he does one and then a couple, you know, Cook does another one, the kind of thing. But if you come to us and say, oh, God, I need twenty of them done this week, well, that's not a project because we have to dedicate somebody for a long period of time. Most of our work is either preventative maintenance or dealing with tickets that come in. And so that, if you want to take projects addressing tickets, absolutely. That's the lion's share where you're going to see.
And just to expand on that from the operational point of view is we've really transitioned to the remote support aspect. We have a dedicated remote support team to try to funnel as many tickets that can be associated with remote support as possible. So not only is the town
Yeah.
Not only is the town um waiting for Cam to show up Wednesday morning to assist with a ticket, it can be associated with a fix with a technician within ten, fifteen minutes. Um but that leverages Cam on site to only focus on things that can physically only be done in person um as well as longer-term initiatives. So any preventative maintenance associated is I have specific longstanding tasks that can be relocated and as he can identify time in between tickets on site, uh he he follows that in as well.
Um just to make sure, oh, go ahead.
The the package that um our novice people were talking about, is this something that we need to be talking about for this budget season?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So have we included the numbers that are that we saw on the screen? That's that's we've already, that's already included in the number we've been working with.
This is the town novice, the school has their own.
Yeah. Except for the replacement of those twenty-one machines and you're looking at at least twenty-five thousand dollars for them. Right?
No, a little less than that. But we've got, we've got money in this year's budget. We'll have money in next year's budget.
And I mean, the reality is, of course, comes to worst, there is holdover measures that we don't, I mean, you're spending money for no, you're renting essentially at that point, right? But if it became a like a real jam-up that a one year is probably okay. Here, but if there's like a handful or like, hey, look, we just can't make the budget, then there's like a sixty-dollar a device kick out for a year. Next year gets a little more offensive, but um but a bias in time if you need to play the uh fiscal year game.
And we and we are working with Cameron, who is our onsite technician, to determine what we should focus on in the balance of this fiscal year and then, you know, what we're going to do in next fiscal year.
And we're looking at laptops for all those, right? Not desktops.
It's up to you.
It depends on the use.
We have largely been replacing computers with laptops so that we have portability.
And what are we assuming in terms of the life cycle of our machines for in terms of when we should be replacing, five years, three years?
Yeah, uh between five and six years.
And that's and that's what we have. We've built a, we've built a hardware plan
Right.
which assumes a five to six-year lifecycle.
And you guys are really good on that. There's a fair number of clients that don't get on with that and commit to it. It's hard to get like, get going with it. You guys have done a really good job trying to get on. So this number's way better than what could have been.
Yep.
Help your scale.
So do we have a comfort level with their presentation at the moment? What's that?
Very much.
Sure.
Yes. Appreciate knowing what they do.
Yeah.
We just pay the bill.
I T is one of those things no one does.
Just blindly approve it.
Wow, the internet works great today, right? It's only when there's a problem. And and sometimes when things go too well, people are like, well, what are we paying for? Sure. It should be like air.
So it's nice to know the difference between, oh crap, or oh great, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, you guys uh it's one of those mysterious things that always happens and sometimes this board has questions. And and these gentlemen are much better at answering those questions than I am because they understand it much better than I. But we thought it was appropriate after our V C I O meeting, we brainstormed and we came up with a bridge or abbreviated version of the V C I O for them to come and share with you tonight. And we we have had conversations with the school and it is the school's intent and our intent to work together to sign the three-year agreement so that we can both take advantage of the savings.
We're more than glad to come to meetings, so.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It was a pleasure meeting you.
Yes.
Special thank you for the security that you provided.
Thank you.
It's been a long haul.
I I can only say I do so much as your operation. We have a full dedicated security operations. Hannah's going to go here those words as well, so. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Um so is there any interest in moving ten A and up so that we can get John on the road here?
I don't mind waiting.
No?
No. Especially if anything, if you're folks had something on your agenda.
You gentlemen are welcome to to stay or leave.
We're hoping, we're hoping to get some dinner. We might actually go down to the rest of it's like approval minutes.
Where are you going to?
Does anybody else? Another, another client's right now.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's a pleasure, Lee.
Thank you. I hope he didn't make you wait. Okay.
Um Chairman, I would make a motion to move ten A up to wherever we are now.
Yes.
That's a good, that's a good.
Ten eighty. Up to under novice presentation, please. You'll end it. Smooth rate.
Three B?
No. Three C. Three C?
Up to three C. Uh is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so uh let's see, we need to have um, I'm going to switch A and B. Uh a discussion formation of an ad hoc committee for U S two hundred and fifty celebration. And we had him in front of us, John, who would, would you like to floor for a moment?
Trust you have time to read the uh the other resonators regarding.
Yeah, because Jesus is so old.
I am John Toomey, forty-five Kevren Road.
Thank you.
Right, so forty-four to be right. Then often do.
Current address on.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I it wasn't very clear.
My name is John Toomey.
Last name, how do you, how do you spell the last name?
T O O M E Y.
Toomey, okay.
Forty-five Kevren Road.
Thank you.
So your intent here is to
Well, hoping anyway you've
Jump in on the committee?
You're doing fit.
Um so we're going to need oh, I think we already have somebody on board, didn't we? Um
So the two people we've talked, the two people we've talked to so far is Arlene Piano and and John Toomey. I think we need, we're going to need more than that for our committee, but you know, we talked at the last meeting for this board to start thinking about that and thinking about other individuals that might be appropriate to serve on this committee.
Is it true?
Yes.
Uh can I ask this Toomey a question?
Absolutely.
Do you have people on a uh historical society that you feel would be proactive and be beneficial to be on this ad hoc committee?
I think some of them might be able to um except for Arlene and myself. We're the babies of the group and I'm seventy. Um my cousin Genevieve Robb is ninety-four, but she comes to everything. I don't know how much, you know, things would have to be done during the day for some of these people. A lot of our members don't drive at night. Um but I was thinking, I was thinking more along the lines of doing it the way that we did our three-hundredth anniversary with a committee reaching into all of the towns of nonprofits and whatever other groups, the school, but the list of it. Um do something very similar to that. So that the entire community gets an input in the two hundred and fiftieth birthday.
So do we still have uh
We still have groups.
Framework from the three hundred anniversary?
Well.
Yeah, right here.
We we do. I but I I couldn't find my folder with all of the events that we had originally planned five years ago. And
You have to go again?
And I had to count, I had things planned for the Historical Society once, one event almost every month. And um one by one, I had to drop them off. I've been able to, I was able to do virtually during twenty twenty and two others we did, I think, uh Bolton's three hundred plus two and we just did Bolton's three hundred plus four. Two of the events that I was going to do, I just dropped.
We did one in three hundred plus three.
And yeah. Yeah, so we we tried to bring as many of them back, but you know, some of them just weren't possible to do. Um but I think we could we could um try to create a committee very similar to what we did five years ago. We can contact the Alliance, the Fire Department and P T A and who knows who else we had, the Land Trust and there's other groups that were involved, certain members were involved. And this, we met here almost every month. And I, we've got two years, yeah. And I, we've got two years, yeah. We've got sixteen, yeah, twelve, yeah, two years, what we've got? Sixteen months, be- between now and July fourth.
So we're gonna try.
We can do this, and I don't think we need to get too heavily involved and too, um, I, I, I'm, what I, what I have done, I could find whatever the hell I'm trying to talk about here, there.
So there is no criteria, we just, whatever.
They, you know, the state created the America two fifty Connecticut um, in the summer of twenty twenty two. And, um, they've been meeting periodically, monthly, I'm sorry, they've been meeting monthly, mostly by Zoom. And occasionally they'll have an in-person meeting somewhere in Detroit. Um, there have been events that I've gone to, um, in the last two years, um, it's pretty much it's, um, in conjunction with America two fifty Connecticut, with the Connecticut League of History Organizations, which the historical society belongs to. Um, we've had, uh, it was a two day long conference at my alma mater, Central Connecticut State uh, last April. And there was another one, and that one, one, two, in a and one in the, uh, spring of twenty four was called declaring, quote unquote, declaring freedom. And there was a lot of different topics that came up, and it was a, it was a wonderful two day conference. Uh, this past month, there was one simply titled seventeen seventy five, cause years ago, we talked about different issues that came up, that were relevant three hundred years ago. I'm sorry, twenty or fifty years ago. Um, and I, I know these groups are always gonna be having different events, and they have a website, don't ask me the website address, I could look it up, but. The, um, there's a lot of interest, um, every town is beginning to develop their own America two fifty for their own town like we are, I know Vernon has one, Manchester has one, um. One of the other things that, um, we've done, or to honor, to celebrate the two hundred fiftieth is they just had a two hundredth anniversary of General Lafayette, his return visit to America. And he basically, the, um, all the groups in this several states have this really nice gentleman who was General Lafayette the entire time. And he went from site to site to site, and I went to three of those in Connecticut, one in Vernon, one in Wethersfield, and we were at Stephen's house, where he would have been where Washington, George Washington in seventeen, in the seventeen eighties.
So, so what do we wanna do with the committee, the ad hoc committee, let's, let's, what's that?
I've been writing down.
Some notes?
Yes.
Okay.
What would you like, what would you expect?
Well, my thoughts, no, you, as you were speaking, my mind, my mind actually was working, um, and, and this is, this is not, I'm kidding, but bringing back, uh, what we've done, and we've done a number of these things in the past, so the groups that we have included, just the ones I could quickly come to mind are the scouts, the seniors, all our churches, the PTO, bar department, our schools, um, also our, um, recreation department, and we, the Lions Club, even though they're, they're still in existence, and.
They're two lines.
Yeah, well, well, I, I, I mean, as, as, at least as a core.
Sure.
Uh, to do that, those are, and a lot of the other groups don't exist anymore, but if there are others that I'm so old that I'm not a part of, that are much newer, but I don't know of any, but I, I mean, they would be, but that would be, I think, a good, a good base.
Would like to do the way we did it before.
Right.
The, uh.
I mean, that's pretty much it, but those are the groups that came to mind right off the bat.
Yeah.
And then, anyone from the public would be interested, be interested in it, but, you know, trying to get volunteers today, you know, is like trying to, you know. Please get Buffalo.
I think we could do, we did the last thing too, and, uh, with, uh, through the Bolton.
Yes.
Yeah. For volunteers, but setting a date from certain is what we.
For an initial meeting.
For the initial meeting and you put out, and you make calls to get people to come.
Well, one of the other groups I've contacted, um, a few of you remember Captain Tarantino from the Dragoons?
Yeah.
Hmm.
So, I don't know if you knew, he passed away in October.
Yes.
Um, I went to his memorial service in Wethersfield and talked to a few of them, and I said I would let them know if and when we decided to do something, because, you know, it's going to be hard to get some groups um, to work with this, simply because it's the two hundred fiftieth and they're gonna be needed. The demand is gonna be everywhere, and I'm hoping that we, what we could do is what we did in, um, and, and send my resume of in, um, June of two thousand six and in June of twenty twenty one. We had the Dragoons come for their two hundred and the things you forget. When they came in June twenty sixth, we had that Quater Parade.
Like, yeah.
And, um, we, um, we had the Horse Guard, both the Dragoons, we had the Governor's Foot Guard, Lieutenant Governor came, John Larson came. Um, and you were there.
Our governor, our congressman was there, I was there, that tells you how old it was.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we, so we did assume we think for our two, yeah, our two fifty.
Our two fifty.
As well.
Yes, we had a Quater Parade for that, yeah.
So it sounds as though the most important piece of this puzzle
Yes.
is recruiting people.
Right.
At the moment.
So my thought, man, I have a suggestion.
To try to put that, that would be the part of the commission to put it together, I just wanna get it moving here, so go ahead.
So to move it, I would recommend that we, we have, you're gonna have to take at least a month to get the word out, but I would set an April date as the first meeting date here at the town hall, and I don't have a book, it would be a good day to do that, to all those people who would be interested, either from, we could ask these group to send a delegate here.
Yep.
And, uh, I'll be happy to join you for that, if I'm here.
Yeah.
I, so we'll pick a date, but I think that's, that's, that's the key, have to have a start date or this stuff goes nowhere fast.
Right.
So, um, what, what's, we, we can, maybe in this coming week, get, get a, a start date on it, we get, we'll get touch with you and
Get together.
And get going, right.
In the, in the end.
And then, and yeah, and then, after we meet there, if we're running short in Memorial Day Parade, you round them up, grab them quick after the parade.
Make any, uh, action, or is this just a discussion and we're gonna talk about it?
Strictly discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so if I find my three hundredth folder, you want me to try to forward ask you?
I'm, I'll, I'll dig for mine, Joe, I know I have it, I, I saw it, I just.
I think it had all, it had all the agendas and everything on it.
I've got all that too. I think, you know, the way things go, but I'm pretty sure I have it.
So.
Um, so I'm thinking, cause what I said to them, I said tentatively, it would be good to do it in June, whatever that second or third weekend in June, which is coincidentally, when the Washington and Washington, while everybody was here.
In, in twenty twenty six.
Yes, in twenty twenty six, that, in June.
Okay.
It might be better to have a parade then, cause you try to do a parade for the fourth through July, you know, I third or fourth, just Friday and Saturday. The, the groups that are gonna be in demand in the big cities, you know, the.
It's tough, right, for the three hundred, to round up groups was tough.
Yeah.
Cause they wanted money.
Right.
And that's the issue, most, most of them.
Yeah.
Uh, is that, that's what I ended up doing, and.
Raise the money, and put it in some foundation.
Yeah.
So this should be a foundation fund funded?
If there's still money there, but that's.
There is.
Okay, but that's, that's to be discussed, once we get together, instead of here tonight dragging the meeting on.
But I just wondered, I didn't know if I touched it, we were gonna go for that weekend.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, but I didn't, but I didn't commit them, commit myself to it because this didn't exist.
Right.
And, you know, the social society would do it, we would do it ourselves anyway, if we didn't do this for that. What?
I don't understand what you said.
If, if you hadn't created, if you hadn't tried to create a, a America two fifty, we were gonna just do it anyway, you know, get permission through Jim's office to use the farm and maybe, and have a parade the way I did it back in two thousand six.
So who wants to pick the date? Kathy and John, or?
We'll have to look at the book.
Yeah.
I think we let you guys, you know, Jim and Kathy see. We'll, we'll be in communication. Yeah, what would be, what, what would be a good date, and that's the one we'll go and
so we'll go with that.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll talk some whispers on.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so let's go on to the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay.
Discussion, an appointment from the committee and consider and possibly act on Memorial Day Parade.
So we've had a, uh, for when you're back, um, we had a resignation of our, uh, coordinator, uh, that is Kathy Walsh.
Mm hmm.
Who did a fabulous job the last couple of years.
Hmm.
And, um, we accepted that with, um, and we had someone else that said yes, but then has to have some head and health issues, so that, that person is unable to do it. Uh, I have reached out to another gentleman and a veteran, and I have not heard back from them, I've been waiting, I was hoping to hear from them by today, and have not heard from them, uh, and we had the good fortune to have, um, Stephanie Crane, our recreation director, says she will be helpful and instrumental in getting it off the ground, but we need a town citizens' commitments to put together and be on boots on the ground for the actual day. So we're in the process.
Correct.
This morning I told Stephanie that I would help her. Um, and it's, if nothing else, if, if nothing has been done for Memorial Day, it's already April four.
We know that.
Memorial Day is not that.
Smart, or smart.
Oh, yeah.
Two little ways away.
So we got two months.
Yeah.
Had a whole two months.
John, you and I will always help her.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we've been a patchy group town on, but we cannot be.
I'll be there.
Yeah, and Pam, so we, we have, we have to help, we just needed that each person.
Each person, but it's so, it's late enough where I know you have to get a student to do the.
No, we have, we have a whole booklet on how to do it.
Okay.
Manual.
She did a wonderful job.
She's, I heard that she did.
Yeah, so, all that, all that, that, that we have, we just need a person.
But the school has to be informed that needs to be done.
We talked to her already.
We talked to.
So do we need a motion?
No, we don't. I did too.
I'm sorry?
Do we need a motion?
It needs.
A motion to what?
To form the committee, oh. Of Stephanie, John, Bobby, and Pam.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint a Memorial Day Parade Committee spearheaded by Stephanie Crane with John Tumi, Bob Moore, and Pam.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I open my mouth.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep, I had a discussion.
Oh, you do?
Uh, we have a volunteer coming from the community, I would like to, uh, have you extend that motion amended to say.
Community member?
Community member, does it mean for? So amended.
And I'll accept that, in a minute, a second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's seven zero.
And did Bob second both of those motions?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so now we move back up to number five.
Um, the appointment of Ann Spencer to the Senior Citizens Association.
Second.
Go back vacancy.
Uh, seconded by Pam, is there any discussion? Uh, thank you, Ann, for stepping up, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's the class.
And D, I'd like to, uh, move the board to appoint, uh, Paula Lynn to the Conservation Commission.
As a full member.
She, it's, it's actually, she wants to be on the Heritage Farm Commission.
Oh, that's what I thought.
It's not the Conservation.
Oh.
If you look at her letter.
Yes, page five.
I, I thought.
No, it's, it's, it's.
The agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, for this heritage.
Okay, one more time.
To be a person, correct.
One more time. Who said, Bob?
No, go ahead, somebody else.
I'll make a motion that we accept Paula Lynn's, um.
To the Heritage.
Appointment to the Heritage Farm Commission as a correction also to the news.
And also, it has to be as a full member, she's.
As a full member. I'll second.
Uh, is there any other discussion? Thank you, Paula Lynn, for coming up to bat, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero.
I'm sorry, on the, on the one prior, you, uh, was it Tim Sadler that moved to approve Anna Spencer's appointment?
Negative.
Bob Moore?
Bob Moore made the point, made the, uh, motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Uh, and. Third, I'd like to.
See, see.
A what?
See.
I see. Oh, yeah, I see, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept with regret the resignation of Leslie Brand as the Board Clerk from the Conservation Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Record.
Uh, is there any discussion? Uh, thank you for your service, Leslie, and all these years, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, now we go down to number six, correspondence. Um, Amanda Balboni has submitted a correspondence.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Amanda brings up a, a complimentary correspondence to us regarding our Director of Recreation Department and all the activities that influence multi-generational groups around town. Ultimately, the gist of her letter was that we fulfill the Rec Department at the amount requested in fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety two dollars.
Uh, thank you for your input, Amanda.
The other one.
Balboni.
She's online, so thank you very much.
Thank you. She's there, thank you, Amanda. Uh, okay, is there any other correspondence? No, now we're down to minutes. We can either do these or push them off table, so next.
We can.
That would allow us to.
Mr. Chairman, then, uh, on your suggestion, I would move that we table the items seven, A, B, and C, and place them on the agenda for March eleventh.
Um, is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Minutes are tabled. Uh, hey, budget and tax up. Number eight, reports and updates. Uh, budgets and tax updates. I have a feeling that we all leave these minutes here, they can reuse them next time. Is there any questions or comments on the budgets? The budget or tax updates? Uh huh. Everything is pretty much running in line where it's supposed to be. On the budget goes. As far as the taxes go. Um, those also look like they're in line.
The taxes have not yet been adjusted to, um, with the liability for whatever spending carry out mention next year, for the people we will owe credit.
Yeah, we've still got a few more companies.
Yes.
Yeah, they wanted to finish up a couple more before they would.
Uh, is there any comments or on those? In seeing none, uh, we'll move forward and consider and act on approving. Forward and consider and act on approving budget transfers if needed.
Don't think there's any updates.
The six thousand dollar one?
If it's the six thousand and all the one, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve a six thousand dollar transfer from the election budget from the category of office supplies to the category of professional education. Training elections.
Now it's not in your mouth.
But it looks like Jim signed it and approved it.
Yeah.
But we, I thought you just.
Oh, I thought it was six thousand.
It's over two thousand. You have to bless it.
You can approve it, but then we have to.
Well, it shows that I've looked at it.
I see, okay.
That's really what that's about.
If we say no, they can't do it, then he'll have to take a signature.
Yep.
That's what. Well, let's see. Should we have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero. Moving on, we're on to um. Update on. Colonial Road.
The update is that we're waiting for another update from EverSource. They've. About three trees they have at least growing. They don't. And we don't have a date for when they're gonna be back there. We keep pinging our. EverSource liaison, but we don't have an answer.
So that's.
We can, we continue to, we continue to. Chase EverSource down. I think it's. Just distressed by the fact that they got started and didn't come back. And we can't seem to get a date of when they're coming back.
Should we reach out to our legislators?
Well, they got it. We threatened that the last time when it got us action, so I can certainly do that again.
I think one of the issues of these storms we've had too, that had them. Probably drop certain projects and then. The problem is they never go back to the same project again, and they they get put on the agenda and then. God knows where. Did they take three of the important trees down that were problem trees or?
I'm not, I'm not sure how they picked the three trees. They they picked the three trees that are on the property that's owned by the town.
Oh, okay.
The the property that we became owners of in a tax sale last year.
It may be Matt can. Give us some information.
There's nothing to lose.
Right.
I'll contact their.
Neighbor.
One of our neighbors who's up there and. EverSource.
Um. Okay, so now we're down to. Number eleven. Town Administrator's report. Actually, we haven't.
Um, could I um? Just ask um. Under the February road race that went off about any issues. Um, what was the response from the parade committee? Did you hear back from them?
The parade committee.
I mean, the uh race.
No.
We talked, we sort of talked a little bit about trying to get them to pick another one because of ice and snow and.
That was the. The groundhog.
Yeah, the groundhog road race, yeah.
Yeah, big time. It was amazing.
Thank you very much.
Hundred and fifty.
It was sizable, yeah.
When was that? In the land trust, you're gonna have a. Polar dive.
A polar plunge, March fifteenth. Yep, jumping into the.
The lake is slow.
Yeah, we're gonna cut a hole there. I I was told they're gonna cut a hole if it's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of why if I'd be interested. So, and in addition to the. Uh, we have a grant. Uh, seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, we'd have to pay twenty percent. And it's for handicap, for handicap accessible van. It's a five, three, one, zero grant. We just became aware of it last week. Um, I've asked for Carrie for her assistance. To fill out the grant paperwork. Um. We, I don't think that the ARPA funding could be used for the match. Um, but it's a seventy-five thousand dollar. Uh, grant that we would be going for with the permission of the board. And the reason that we need your blessing is because. You guys are the appropriations committee for the twenty percent match, so um. That would uh really solve an issue too on next year's. Yeah, it would help.
Can we put that on then March eleventh meeting?
We can't.
You have to have it tonight?
W- w- this is something that we we, if if we're gonna move forward with this grant, because we have to have a public notice in. By March fifteenth, the grant is due April first.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that. Yeah, make it eleven.
Aye. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye. Uh, okay, so now we need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to allow Jim and relevant town uh employees to apply for a five, three, one, zero grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. For the purposes of getting a handicap accessible van for the town that would require a twenty percent match from the town.
All in favor? Aye. Seven yes. Zero no. Uh, and then next in the.
Is Pam? I apologize, but was Pam the second on both of those?
We've we've just for for a note, um. High and Bond has has been asked to. Provide constant monitoring while the. Notch Road building is being knocked down, and we had. Um. An allowance for their participation in this project. And this will exceed their. Original allowance, and the agreement was that we would, they would just charge us by the hour and. And uh we approved another twenty-three thousand dollars, which is from the contingency fund for. The Notch Road Municipal Center. Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay, every, everything else remains on time and on target budgetarily. Um, and what they're, what they're doing. For this additional cost, because we have the PCB remediation, as well as some additional remediation. Is to make sure that that remediation goes off appropriately. That they can provide their reporting to EPA appropriately for the PCB remediation in particular. And they're gonna be doing uh air quality monitoring around the site, so they're gonna be renting some equipment. So that if anybody, you know, is concerned about the air quality. Around the area during the demolition, we'll have the data to show that, you know, we're managing that site appropriately.
And that wasn't in their proposal?
It was not in their original proposal. Well, they they had actually proposed it originally and and Rodney and I cut them down and said, well, we'll revisit it. Uh, when the time comes to see if we think it's warranted, and we've been discussing it. And we do believe that it is warranted.
And you said it's uh from contingency funds, so it was, so these are not extra dollars? These are dollars that were already budgeted into it?
Correct. We don't have to appropriate additional funds, but we had enough money already in the capital budget. About about two hundred thousand dollars for contingency over our budget for the demolition project. Well, these, these, this approximately twenty-three thousand dollars would come out of that contingency dollars that we have available. It's not an additional budget appropriation. Um, okay.
Turn the lights off at night? We're wasting electricity.
In the building?
Yeah.
I don't know why they do that. They just leave mine.
I guess I haven't been by there at night, but yes, I could.
Right, I, you know, I, thank you for reminding me. I was gonna, I forgot about that.
Can we go, can we go back to my report for just one minute?
Yeah, we have.
So this is an item that really is in my report, but it's not written in my report. You know, we have been talking about the um. Schematic plan for the town hall, and we had this as an agenda item and we discussed it. And I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I really think what we should do. Is to move, we're starting going forward for an RFP. I think we should move forward for an RFQ. And and the, and the difference is, is a request proposal is gonna give us a proposal for the cost. If we ask for requests for qualifications. We will get. A group of professionals that will. Tell us what they can bring to the table for this project. And then we can interview that group of professionals and decide who we would like to bid on the project. So that way, when we have bids for the project, we know that those bids are coming from individuals that we have vetted. And we are considering that we would like to work with. And so I'm just, and I think really what I'm looking for, I don't think the board needs to necessarily act on this, but at least consensus. For me to be able to move forward in that direction, so I can start. Writing up whichever way we wanna go.
So an RFP, we could end up with. With somebody coming up with everything and there's no criteria.
Well, we would have criteria in the RFP about what we're actually asking for. But then you're, you're. You have a much, I I think you're just, I just believe that you're better off. Getting proposals from a group of people who you have vetted. And have decided that based on. The relationship that you've built during an interview. And a collection of data processed about their qualifications, you're getting proposals from people that you would like to work with. Rather than just proposals from the entire, you know. World, the entire business world that might wanna bid on a project.
So what they're, what they would be telling us is why they're qualified to do the job?
Correct.
But when you go out with an RFP, it, you're only gonna get people who are qualified to do the job doing the proposal, aren't you?
Be able to incorporate.
You're gonna get people who want the job.
Yeah, generally.
You not be qualified, that's the issue.
But it also usually gives you a depth of. How much service they can provide.
Yeah.
And then you begin to compare and realize what's missing from some and.
It's a lot more legwork than all said and done, I think. I would expect.
What's a lot more?
There are peace.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, is, I don't, I don't know, I don't.
A two-step process.
But an RFQ is not a lot of like, it's not a lot of specific uh time-intensive legwork on behalf of the architect because. They're not putting together, they're just giving you a statement of qualifications. They're gonna give you a resume of what they've done. They're gonna come to an interview and. Help answer questions as to. Their vision, what services they can provide, what ideas they might have, where funding might come from. And experience is probably the most important thing. May have somebody that mostly does manufacturing facilities or something like that, but they wanna throw their hat around. Well, maybe we. You know, that's probably not a good fit. Whereas somebody that's done sixteen town halls in the Indian area in Eastern Connecticut, they're not, would probably be on the shortlist. But then those people would probably appreciate being on the shortlist later on when they do have to do the legwork. When you're competing against ten, twelve other contractors, that's a waste of your time.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Is there any cost to the town for doing an RFQ?
Just our advertising costs.
Nothing's fresh.
Nope, nope, okay.
Yeah, I I I don't like the idea of um slowing the process down because it's been slow. So um.
I don't know if you're slowing it down at that point.
I think what you're doing is is you're narrowing your your pool down. So if you, if we went out for an RFP. We would either choose the five lowest bidders, which might not be the group that you wanna actually work with to interview. Or we would interview all fifteen that submit proposals. Right, and so I think by having the RFQ. You're maybe, you know, taking a pool of ten or twelve and you're narrowing it down. To a, to a pool of maybe five or six, and you're getting proposals from that five or six.
It's also a way, I think, to have a more effective RFP when you are ready to put that out, because you'll get ideas.
We learn a lot.
You'll learn a lot.
In the process.
It needs to be, sorry, I don't think it needs to be, well, I don't know, I haven't done this at a town level, but I think it can be done fairly easily because it's not as. Uh, comprehensive as an RFP that you have to put together and put a lot of thought into, or you're just asking for statements of qualification and who wants, who's interested. And who wants to come in for an interview?
Okay, and how how quickly do you think you could get the? How long would this take from start to finish?
I I would hope that I could have that done in the next three weeks. The problem, the the problem is that the board needs to understand is. Our day is never what we plan every day. We are putting out fires every day. I'm understaffed, I'm underwater. And we do the absolute best that we can with what we have. And we, we don't have people to write RFQs and RFQs. That, that's me doing it, trying to do it within my normal workday. I do sometimes hire professionals to help us when we need to, like for instance. Recently, we hired Friar and Associates to provide us a a a plan, a schematic plan. And a budget so that we could put the grant together. For the Steve Grant for rooms A and B. So, you know. Uh, you know, I I say that I'd like to get this done in three weeks, but you know, that that is in a, I want you to understand that that's. In a perfect world where, you know, the world just doesn't. Fall apart for other things, you know. My day started off with a list of things I was gonna accomplish. And I spent my morning at the Bolton Center School for potential gas leak because the fire chief wasn't available. And he wanted somebody there that could get there quickly. Right, so these are the kinds of things that I just hope the board appreciates that we deal with on a daily basis. That are not part of our normal everyday activities, and and we can't really account for those.
Trying to find a town clerk. To fill in.
Right, I mean, right. I mean, we've, we've had, unfortunately. Uh, we've had some issues in our town clerk's office with. Uh, tragic losses for both of our, both our town clerk and our. And our deputy town clerk, so you know, we had to scramble to find somebody to keep the town clerk's office, but. You know, fortunately, we have a town resident who did that for a lifetime. Uh, a career, and she was available. So, you know, we, those are the things that we deal with every day that. You know, sometimes get in the way of the things that we would like to do and the things that we really want to do. So it's, you know, it's priorities, just hope the board appreciates and understands that our priorities change every day based on. What is the most pressing need at the time?
So do you think you could shoot for March thirty-first?
Absolutely.
As a, as a goal?
Yes.
Okay.
To put the RFQ out?
Yes.
Or to get them back?
Well, to get it. Oh, I. I think that's what you're saying, Jim.
Yeah, to get it, to get it drafted and get it out. Yeah.
And then can you put a pretty short timeframe on getting the proposals back?
Hopefully, it's about two weeks.
Okay. So we're talking mid-April then as a goal to get the RFQs back? And then we would start interviews.
Shortly after that, it, you know, depends on. When we can get together, right? I mean, I've had. And and just for instance, for you, I've had. All of the information back for the facility study for weeks now, and we're trying to get a meeting together. Um, so it's, you know, it's really about, you know, our availability as a group to be able to meet, to go over those things too.
Where does the firehouse? The strategy.
He was waiting for the chief to feel bad.
Is there anything else before we move on to number twelve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would stack to members if they would please leave me a minute and we will save them to save paper.
Mm hmm.
No, the minutes, yes.